Good evening and welcome to this candidate forum. This forum is being recorded and presented in English with simultaneous Spanish interpretation. Tonight, we are fortunate to have Berta Campos and Da Maris Cara with us as your interpreters. You will soon hear from the six candidates running for three seats on the San Anselmo Town Council. But first, Berta will tell you how you may listen to this forum in Spanish.
Hola, bienvenidos al foro de esta noche que presenta los candidatos que se postulan para el Ayuntamiento de San Anselmo. Este foro se presenta en inglés con interpretación simultánea en español. Si desea escuchar el foro en español, haga clic en el icono del globo de interpretación en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Si está en un dispositivo inteligente, ya sea un celular o una tableta, o si no ve el globo, por favor, vea y busque los tres puntitos y en esos puntitos usted oprima el clic y luego escoja la traducción, interpretación de idiomas, luego seleccione español. Y finalmente, todos, por favor, pongan en silencio el audio original. Esta opción la puede encontrar en el mismo menú del icono de globo. Haga clic en silenciar el audio original para escuchar solo español y no los dos idiomas al mismo tiempo. Gracias.
Please bear with us for a moment while we set up this Spanish audio. Now, I am delighted to introduce Benedetto Chico, President of the San Anselmo Chamber of Commerce. Benedetto, you're okay.
Hello, everybody, and welcome. I'm Benedetto Chico, the president of the San Anselmo Chamber of Commerce. Many thanks to all the citizens who are attending tonight's forum. Many thanks to the candidates and to the Marine League of Women Voters who has helped us up to set this forum together. I'd like to remind everybody that we are a whole volunteer chamber, so all the revenues from our membership and events go back to our community, to our great town. So I would like to recognize our board members Nancy Altman, Chris Kelson, Vance Frost, Lori Berliner, and our great ambassador Frank Gometz, who, by the way, had just been named Business Citizen of the Year for the Bank of Marine Spirit of Marina Award. Thank you, Frank. We support many, many events and several organizations in town. Among them, Live on the Avenue, The Flower Baskets, Classic Car Show, Ship and Stroll, Beatles in the Park, and coming very soon, our annual traditional holiday tree light celebration. We would like to encourage everybody, even if you're not a business, if you're not a merchant, please join the chamber, support our great, great community. And coming to tonight's forum, elections are very important, we know, and I believe, all believe, that local elections are even more important. As most of our daily life is really set, both as residents and business owners, by the rules, regulations that are passed at our local level. So it is extremely important to pay attention to our local elections. This incoming town council will have really important work to deal with on some extremely important issues that affect our lives. Among them, we have a big debate, as we know, about rent control, identity, and flood control. As a chamber, as a Chamber of Commerce, and by the way, we are independent, we are not linked to any national or state organization, we are fully independent, we clearly care a lot about the impact that our town has on our businesses, on our merchants, and on the economic vitality and cultural vitality of our community. So we really encourage, strongly encourage, our elected officials and the town staff to understand what we as businesses and merchants and restaurants we need when you make your decisions. Please do listen to us. You know, San Anselmo is a great place also because we have such a vibrant local business district, from downtown to Red Hill to Greenfield. So final reminder, encouragement, suggestion, please, to all the candidates tonight. Please remember, do remember that you represent us, we, the citizens, we, the people, and good luck to all of you, and thank you for making this possible. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Benedetto. I'm Becky Bingay, I'm your moderator for tonight. And good evening and welcome to this candidate forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Marin County and the San Anselmo Chamber. With me are League members DeeDee Butori, our Zoom Support Leader, and Carol Incalis, our Time Keeper and Question Sorter, along with the Technical Support Team at the Community Media Center of Marin, CMCM, Berta Campos, and Da Maris Cara, who are providing Spanish language interpretation. Tonight, we will hear from the six candidates running for the three seats on the San Anselmo Town Council. This legislative body is responsible for setting town policy and adopting the town budget. Five council members are elected at large by the San Anselmo electorate for four-year terms. The Marin League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan, membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We promote voter education and advocate for issues. We never endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. Moderating candidate forums is an important part of our work. This evening's forum is being simulcast on Marin TV Channel 30, facilitated through our partnership with CMCM. It is being recorded and will be available at our website, MarinLWV.org. It will be rebroadcast on Marin TV Channel 30. There are six candidates running for three seats on the Town Council: Eileen Burke, Ford Green, Kurt Johnson, Guy Meyer, Yoav Schlesinger, and Chantel Walker. All of the candidates have agreed to the guidelines and the time limits for this forum. Each candidate is invited to make a two-minute opening statement. After that, they will each have one minute to answer each question. To be fair, I will rotate the order and all candidates will be asked the same questions. So for opening statements, we'll begin with Eileen.
Thank you. I'm Eileen Burke. I'm the current mayor of San Anselmo, and I'm running for my second term on the council. I was born and raised in San Anselmo and have lived in town almost my entire life. This gives me a unique perspective because I identify with just about every member of town. If you have kids, I was a kid in this town. Me and my five brothers and sisters walked and rode our bikes to school. We played on the fields at Memorial. We lamented that there was nothing to do as teenagers. If you have a young family, I was you. My husband and I raised our twins in San Anselmo. We are two working parents who had to find daycare. My kids walked and biked to school, attending Wade Thomas, White Hill, and Archie Williams. They played at the dinosaur park, which I helped build in 2000 before they were even born. They played on those same fields at Memorial, which is why I pushed to renovate them on the council. Are you a renter? My family rented in San Anselmo for 15 years before we saved enough to buy a house. If you are a young family looking to expand, we remodeled our house and had to deal with the planning and building department. If you have a small business, my husband and I are both self-employed, and I know the challenges. Are you concerned about flooding? I live in the flood zone, and I'm with you. Wondering how you'll age in San Anselmo? I have a 91-year-old father who lives with my sister and her son in the house I grew up in, so I understand multi-generational housing is one answer. I volunteered in almost every capacity at schools, sports, and town events. Here's what I've done on the council. I led the renovation of Memorial Park Fields and the Millennium Dinosaur Playground. I'm currently leading the final phase of Memorial, the courts to the snack shack. I pushed for a new park, Hilldale Pocket Park, behind United Market. I started a park fund, seeded with $500,000, and with $100,000 annual contribution to help maintain our recreational facilities. I'm not a single-issue candidate. I care about the town and all our residents, and I'm committed to maintaining the quality of life we are all lucky to have here. In endorsing me, the Marin IJ called me a strong, practical voice in the council. I love this town and its residents, and that's exactly what I'll continue to be. I hope I have your vote.
Thank you, Eileen. Next is Ford.
Thank you to the League for this chance to address you, the public, and other candidates. From those without experience, you may hear platitudes and bromides about keeping our community safe and vibrant and working well with others. With no records to examine and upon which to base your judgment, your only choice is to take them at their word. With 15 years on the San Anselmo Town Council from '07 to '22, and three terms as mayor, I'm different from that. I have a record you can scrutinize. My record includes: six years on the Ross Valley Fire District Board, including as chair. I'm endorsed by the Ross Valley Professional Firefighters. 13 years on Marin Clean Energy, including its Executive Committee and as Chair of the Technical Committee. I'm endorsed by former MCE Board members, including Assemblyman Damon Connolly, Fairfax Mayor Barbara Kohler, former Executive Committee Chair and Richmond Mayor Tom Butt, and former VP and current El Cerrito Councilman Gabriel Quinto. Nine years on the Central Marin Police Authority Board, including as Chair. Six years on Transportation Authority of Marin, including its Executive Committee, Flood Zone 9 Advisory Board, San Anselmo Flood Committee, and the San Anselmo Refuge and Recycling Subcommittee. My success on those regional and local boards came by showing up prepared, clearly stating my positions regarding issues, actively listening, and when appropriate, changing my mind. Elected officials often forget what public service means. They forget who they represent, what their purpose is, and how to accomplish it. Consistently independent, I uphold what is right. I was the only council member who voted to protect Memorial Park from becoming a flood-control basin and against an unnecessary $9 million park tax. I look forward to participating in tonight's program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ford. Next is Kurt.
Thank you, Becky, and thanks to our hosts, the Chamber and the League of Women Voters. First, a little personal background. My wife Anne and I have lived in San Anselmo since 2013. Our son Luke is a third grader at Wade Thomas Elementary School. I'm running for Town Council for a number of reasons. First and foremost, because I've worked in climate my whole career. I'd like us to be better prepared for the extreme weather events that are headed our way. We just saw massive rain damage in the southeast. I see climate science every day. We're simply not prepared for what's headed our way. The good news is, unlike most places in the world, we actually have the funds available, and the smartest, I think, get better prepared if we choose to do that. Related to that issue, I've got a long track record of delivering results in resilience, both locally and statewide. I formerly chaired the Climate Commission, the town resilience hub that's just getting underway. Actually, there's a town meeting tomorrow night. I first proposed that in 2019. I wrote an EV resilience bill that just got signed by the governor, so we can all hopefully use our cars to keep the lights on in our homes and our buildings throughout town. Based on talking to voters and neighbors, I think we do need to do a much better job supporting local small businesses that provide essential local services. I could get into that, I think, later in the debate. As a parent of a school-aged kid, I have benefited from all of San Anselmo's youth services, WON's gymnastics, and San Anselmo Rec Sports, summer camps. And I think it's important to continue these family-friendly activities. And finally, I'm running because I want to bring pragmatic, centrist leadership to Town Council. I think there's been some bad decisions over the last year that I disagree with strongly related to flooding and housing. And I think, and I hope, that there's a pragmatic collaborative center lane in San Anselmo politics. And that's the lane where I think we should be traveling, moving forward together. So I look forward to the discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Okay, next is Guy. And please unmute yourself.
Hi there. My name is Guy Meyer, and I've been a resident of San Anselmo since 1975. With my early time being, working in a natural food co-op, I've worked in sustainable food business for many years. For our store, 1975 to '85, to the Fowler Brothers, to Living Foods on Greenfield. I've been actively involved in a commitment to seeing my community have a environmental consciousness and a vision. I also served on the Ecological Farming Association, which is an all-California early organic organization. In 1993, I was the leader of a local movement that got Roundup removed from the park's arsenal of herbicide weapons. And it's interesting to see, back in that time, even then, the Parks Department, everybody claimed there would be no problem, no problem with this. This is sort of the same thing we get today, I think, with a lot of what's going on in the world today still. The destructive forces that have not changed, we're still dealing with them. And some of them come because of our government's own inability to recognize that we're part of the problem. The number one thing I see, well, we have a number of things. The platform needs to be returned to the people. The beginning of this flood district thing was a misguided plan. Housing issues in California are not, we are not served well at all by having them be mandated to us. We have a very, it's destroying our, could destroy our environment, our public safety, and is diminishing our local democracy. I welcome your votes and your endorsements as citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Yoav, you're next.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share my vision for San Anselmo and why I believe I'm the right candidate to lead our town forward. Here's the thing. It's time for San Anselmo to embrace new voices with fresh ideas that represent our future. We can't cling to the past and preserve San Anselmo in amber. We must build a San Anselmo that's ready for 2025, 2045, and beyond. Why? Because when I look at San Anselmo, I see unbounded but untapped potential. Potential to evolve into the community we aspire to be. Our town is amazing, but that cannot and should not be taken for granted. It requires intentional effort to create a San Anselmo that's safe, resilient, livable, affordable, and thriving. I believe we can do better. We can do better by our young families, who are the backbone of our community, but struggle to safely navigate our streets or face unnecessary hurdles when trying to receive a building permit. We can do better for our small businesses, helping them overcome rising costs and making it easier for them to open their doors. We can do better for our first responders, ensuring they're equipped for emergencies and able to live closer than two hours away. We can do better by investing in our parks, which are essential to our quality of life. We can do better by committing to affordable housing so that San Anselmo can welcome people from diverse backgrounds, making our community stronger. And we can do better preparing for the inevitable impacts of climate change. I bring more than 20 years of experience in fundraising and nonprofit management, and now serve as a technology ethicist in my role as a senior director of responsible artificial intelligence. That combination of experiences gives me the unique ability to bridge worlds that need to come together for us to succeed. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Marin IJ, the Sierra Club, the Marin Professional Firefighters, the Marin County Young Democrats, the North Bay Labor Council, and current council members and former mayors Brian Colbert, Steve Burdo, and Alexis Feynman. They believe in my ability to steer San Anselmo toward a new chapter, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thanks so much. And now, finally, Chantel.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you to the League. Thank you to the Chamber. I am running for office as a continuation of the work that I've done in Marin and in our town. I have significant experience as a small business owner, which I have now. I've raised my children in our town and love our town. I have skills in policy development, implementation, and evaluation at the most senior levels of government, in local government. And I have had a track record of accentuating work that is difficult sometimes, but where we can totally come together as a group. So for example, I served as our Assistant County Librarian, sharing information. I worked with our town, San Anselmo, on fair housing. Over the last 20 years, there are many things I've been able to do, including working with cultural institutions in our town and religious institutions in the mode of COVID recovery. So much has changed. My key priorities are our community's economic vibrance. A lot is going well for our small businesses, and there's more that we can do around expediting certain services. Emergency preparedness. I live in a high fire risk zone on Bald Hill and have significant experience as someone who grew up in New Orleans, Louisiana, and understands how cross-generational and cross-jurisdictional work comes together about flood, as well as looking at community connectedness and serving teens. I have been endorsed by the County of Marin Democratic Party, only candidate, by four of the supervisors in San Anselmo, four of the, five of the supervisors, and four members of the Town Council, the North Bay Labor Council. This demonstrates my ability to do community engagement, to bridge communities, and to work well with others. I hope to gain your vote.
Thank you, Chantel. Okay, and now for the questions. We're going to begin the questions with Ford. And question one is, "San Anselmo is facing challenges around affordable housing and tenant protection, particularly in light of increasing rental prices. How do you think the town can address the need for affordable housing while maintaining a healthy rental market that supports both tenants and landlords?" And go ahead and unmute.
Sorry about that. It's got to be one step at a time. I support reasonable rent control. We've got two rent control measures on our ballot this time around, neither one of which are reasonable. They're bad legislation. And what makes the legislation bad is that it divides our community inasmuch as it puts the onus for providing affordable housing on small mom-and-pop landlords. It draws the line at two. If there are three or more, then they're within the scope of the rent control. The cap is at 60%, with no pass-through for utilities unless you've got a separate meter, most of which you don't have. So what the difficulty is, is that rent control, as proposed, gouges mom-and-pop landlords instead of the big corporations that it aims at addressing. The Democratic Socialists of America have gone too far with this legislation. They are not entitled to free rent subsidized by mom-and-pops whose rentals are their retirement nest egg.
Thank you. Okay, Kurt, you're up next.
So my son's teachers at Wade Thomas, my son's a third grader. Not one of them has lived locally to date. Everyone is driven from afar. It's a huge source of our local emissions. So yeah, I'd like there to be more affordable housing in town for our workforce. And I think the way to do that is to more aggressively partner with the private sector as needs be to actually build that. And I think the type of affordable housing that's most commensurate with our community's scale is small-scale, sort of, you know, we have on the books in state law, built up to four units per parcel. I have neighbors who are mom-and-pop landlords who are interested in pursuing that. I think that the ticket is to figure out how to partner with people that own property, including the school district and others, as Nevada was doing, and work towards a world where we're actually making things happen in collaboration with the private sector that's going to be necessary for that to succeed.
Okay, thank you. Next is Guy. Guy, please unmute.
Yeah, we, in San Anselmo, we're living in probably one of the more desirable communities in California, and maybe if many people knew about us, in America, they'd want to be here too. We have all around 40 or 50 apartment houses surrounding downtown. I know it is very expensive to live here. I have found ways to adapt. I'm not a homeowner. I do not believe that the Measure O or Measure N are of good value to the town of San Anselmo. I think it is too much of a burden. I think we're creating the wrong path. When a landlord has to be, give back, if somebody leaves their place and has, over four years gone, has to come back to your, the same apartment, it's a complication that does not benefit San Anselmo.
Thank you. And Yoav, you're next.
The young families I know who've moved to San Anselmo in the last five, six, seven years look around San Anselmo and say, "Why is San Anselmo not more reflective of my values? Why does it not look like the places from where I have come, New York, Los Angeles, Seattle, Austin, these places that are rich, multicultural, socio-economically diverse places?" In order to achieve that, we need to do both affordable housing development as well as rent stabilization efforts to ensure that we have community stability and that we're able to provide the resources and opportunities for everyone. So that means doing dense, multifamily housing development in the flats, where there's easy access to public transportation and core services, and at the same time, ensure that we are instituting reasonable rent control through Measure N in order to assure the people that their rent will not double in the seven years that the California State Rent Control ordinance would allow. That is unsustainable for families with children in the public schools or for older adults looking to age in place. We need both affordable housing and rent control.
Thank you. And next is Chantel.
San Anselmo must address our housing needs. I have 25 years of experience in housing development, finance, and grant-making. We must look at our families, workforce, and older adults through an environmentally sustainable lens. I like solutions like infill, maybe at the US Bank Building, housing linked to public transportation, also helping to reduce the housing crisis and minimizing environmental impacts. Building affordable housing or production is important. Rental regulation is important. On the council, as a council member, I'll use my experience in Marin developing housing to carefully assess our housing options, to work across constituencies, to bring out a balanced approach to housing that adds more, allows for protection, and makes sure that every step of the way, we're listening to San Anselmo residents who want to stay in our vibrant community.
Thank you. And Eileen? Please unmute.
So I was on the Housing Element and Advisory Committee for our town, and I helped identify where it makes the most sense to add infill housing. And I'm currently on the General Plan Advisory Committee, planning for our future of the next 25 to 50 years. So I'm already involved in this issue. I believe we can add some housing, but we need to do it in a way that preserves our character, doesn't overburden our services, and is mindful of traffic and emergency impact. I also believe that at some point, we reach carrying capacity and that adding more people is a detriment to our quality of life, and that that balance is important. I support public housing, and I think that we'll see school districts and municipalities building housing for their workforces, and we're starting to see it around the state now. And I think San Anselmo can partner with other agencies and nonprofits to do that. I know we can't attract police officers, for example. We're down eight officers because they can't afford to live in this area. And I think building workforce housing for our employees is important.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on to question two, and Kurt will start off answering question two. And the question is, "As San Anselmo strives to foster greater diversity and equity, what specific actions would you prioritize to address existing inequities and ensure that the town is a welcoming and inclusive place for all residents?"
I think that starts with building on the work that's already been done with the town of creating a commission to look at this issue and doing a top-to-bottom sort of metrics about where we are and where we need to go. And then, when you think going forward about every decision which is being made, that becomes a lens by which you make a decision about how to proceed, whether, obviously, the big-ticket items are typically hiring and whatnot. But going forward, it's a matter of making that consideration into every decision that the town is making. into every decision that the town is making about how to proceed.
Thank you. And Guy, you are next. Please unmute.
I think we are dealing with America in 2024. We inherited a very aggressive, fantastic system. It's called the capitalist system. We buy, we sell, we try to survive, we make money. To me, the equity issue is not about race, it's about big money. And that, unfortunately, I don't know of the crowbar except by people being local, staying local, hanging in there through the changes of the time. Perhaps there is co-op housing that could be done, perhaps humans, perhaps a citizen should get together and we could buy apartment complexes. But, you know, I have to look at this dense multi-housing proposals of Yoav, and I think some of my Newark candidates. We are, this is not the town we want to be. This is, this is not going to solve the environmental problems of the planet.
Thank you, Guy. And next is Yoav.
Look, so doing the work of diversity, equity, inclusion, and I will add justice to that list, requires hard work, and it requires actually setting targets and then reporting on those targets. It's not enough to just talk about things. You actually have to say what your goals are and then report on your progress toward those. So if we're talking about, as Kurt mentioned, hiring targets, for example, and expanding the diversity of our workforce in San Anselmo, then we need to say, what are we actually looking to achieve? What kind of diversity do we in fact want? And how are we tracking toward that in a year-over-year basis? Secondly, I will say that we need to, in order to truly do diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice, address housing justice, which means workforce housing and sustainable development in order to ensure that our community can actually react to and embrace people with difference and from a diverse set of backgrounds. If we just preserve the covenants and restrictive deed covenants of fifty, sixty, seventy years ago, we will never change.
Thank you. And Shontel?
Community connectedness is one of the core platforms that I have. And equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging with intentionality is part of who's at, of what's at the heart of San Anselmo. But the intentionality needs to expand it. We have resources to bring to this conversation already in place. Our racial equity committee, activating that, supporting it through the town. I wrote the diversity, equity, and inclusion curriculum for the County of Marin that staff were trained on. We have communications opportunities that we can work on. In addition to racial equity, I would look at older adults and how we're supporting them in their needs across the lifetime, as well as teens. We need, I raised my children here, and we have many positive, powerful opportunities. But hearing the voices of teens, intentional inclusion, and leveraging the opportunities in our existing racial justice committee, as well as working with older adults so that they can age in place as renters or as homeowners, is very important.
Thank you. And Eileen?
Yes, well, so while since I've been on the council, we've actually established a racial equity commission. So we have taken that step, and they've reviewed all of our town ordinances to see where we can make change. The truth is, the town can't necessarily attract other races or people that are more diverse, but we can have an impact in hiring, and we can make our town welcoming. And I think that we are making an effort to do that. You know, we, we, every year have, you know, celebrate against hate. We try to be as welcoming as we can, but we can't make people move here. And I think it's an issue of a critical mass. You know, you have to have a certain number of members of a particular race to make other members of that race want to move to an area. And over time, that we will get there, but we aren't there yet. I'm the first to admit.
Okay, thank you. And Ford?
Yes, I'm a believer in leading by example. And when I was on the town council, we did that in terms of hiring women, in terms of, of hiring persons from not white races. We hired a woman to run our streets department. And one of my biggest joys in life was to, was to watch Rachel Calvert ride herd on the gelati guys who were improving streets. We have a problem in San Anselmo as being perhaps the whitest community in California. That's changing. That, that change is slow. And I agree with what Eileen said. You can't force it. But you can lead by example, and you can lead by hiring. And another thing that we did too was to look over and make sure we got rid of all restrictive governments based on race for the transfer of property, which has been time, over time, has been a major means of discrimination.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to question three. And for question three, we're going to begin with Guy. And the question is, please explain which actions you would take as a member of town council to support the town's small businesses and as a prospective member of the town council. How do you propose, how do you propose including San Anselmo merchants in decision-making that impacts the town's business community? And go ahead and unmute, Guy.
I say certainly one thing, the extremely important, would be not to be removing any parking spaces for downtown. And to, to, to help the merchants by, I would like to see a, a, an audit of the town's policies and permits. This is not necessarily, this is like for a beginning business, starting in town. I'm afraid that so many codes and practices have built up over the years that they're not, that they're not easy to open up a business. It's not easy to just get your own home, the necessary improvements. I would like to see a local audit, not with, just with local merchants perhaps could be on a commission, take a look at this situation. In general, you know, it's a great town. I think we need to just become even more and more local. I'm a townie. I don't own a car. I recommend it for everybody on the planet. It's good fun, and you will help your merchants. Thank you.
Thank you. Yoav, you're next.
Our small businesses are thriving and struggling at the same time. There are businesses on San Anselmo Avenue whose rent has been doubled overnight, who are not resilient to that kind of rental increase. So in order to really transform our thriving business district, we need to do a couple of things. First of all, we need to cut the red tape. Opening a business in San Anselmo, getting into the ground, receiving the planning and building permits in order to improve your space and actually get open is an arcane, arduous, and impossible task for many businesses. We need process navigators to help those businesses navigate the challenges. We also need to provide small business grants or funding for those who are squeezed out due to raising, rising rents in order to ensure that they're resilient to those kinds of changes. That could be in the form of grants and opportunities for landlords who institute green building practices, who make tenant improvements. There's all sorts of ways that we can support those businesses to ensure that their rents aren't doubled overnight and that they are able to open quickly and serve our residents more easily.
Thank you. And Shontel, you're next.
San Anselmo is an economically vibrant community. We're a hub for residents and visitors alike. And our community continues to attract. But to keep our businesses healthy, there are a couple of things that we need to do, and there are even a few things underway that I hope to promote while under the council, while on the council and under the council's auspices. One is permitting. I've heard significant input from businesses. Permitting takes longer than is feasible for small and mid-sized businesses. Our staff team is very strong, a very strong group who can look at expeditors, look at different approaches to plan checks. For new entrepreneurs, we need to continue to have conversations, maybe on a monthly or bimonthly basis, about how to navigate our town. We need to look at opportunities to reduce barriers to access to information. And we need to make sure that that conversation is ongoing, not just in our core downtown, but let's extend it also from Ross Avenue all the way to Bellinas. Let's make sure that those smaller districts are also expedited, supported, and the conversation continues.
Thank you. And Eileen?
You know, I find this question kind of amusing because just yesterday, we had a recap meeting about Live on the Avenue and invited the public, candidates, and any merchants downtown to come and talk about what worked, what didn't, how can we support small businesses? And I was the only one there. I didn't see any one of the other candidates there. So Live on the Avenue is one thing we do to support small businesses, and it's been a huge success. Our downtown businesses have asked for lights over San Anselmo Avenue for years, and I think we can do that. I think getting, making sure we maintain parking in town is important. And I think having additional events is also really important. We had a sip and stroll that was great. Our Bootacular that's coming up is very popular and successful for businesses. So the town can support events that then in turn help support our businesses, and we should keep doing that.
Thank you. Ford, you're not, you are next.
Okay, thank you. The, the first thing that I would do is with, in connection with Live on the Avenue, which has been a great success, except they started clearing out the avenue at four thirty, which hurts retail businesses. There's a difference in businesses downtown between retail and restaurants. And where the restaurants benefit from something like Live on the Avenue, which has been a great success, retail doesn't. And so I would shut down the avenue the way it was when I was on the council at five thirty, not at four thirty. Also, I would, I would fight to get our Creek Park Plaza back. It's currently locked up with a chain link fence on the basis allegedly that it's about to fall down or in an earthquake it would. And that was only after the county shopped around and got a fourth expert opinion saying so after having received three that said, no, it was fine. The plaza is an important link between Creek Park and our downtown, which we need, so I would fight to get that back also.
Thank you. And Kurt, you're up next.
So like many, I go to Live on the Avenue with my family and also appreciate the other events that have started to populate the calendar, the Halloween event to go to with my son, the, the holiday event downtown. I think that would be useful to continue building on what's already been, been successful. My next door neighbor is, is Ryan Scott, who's had a very difficult time getting his new business started down at Yolandsdale Station. You know, what should have been very quick has turned into eighteen months, years, and years, and years. I was a small business owner myself for ten years, have worked on cutting red tape. I would start with a, a hearing to like hear directly from some of the small businesses and specifically what their experiences have been with the town to see if we can do a better job of supporting the people who are creating new businesses and adding vibrancy to our community, based on the conversations I've had with some small business entrepreneurs in the food industry, also the new industry downtown that's been struggling. I think we can do better.
Thank you. So for question four, we're going to begin with Yoav. And that question is, there have been a number of racist and anti-Semitic incidents in San Anselmo that do not seem to be acknowledged, let alone addressed. What is your level of awareness of these incidents? And how do you propose bringing visibility and solutions to these problems in the community?
Oh, I am very aware of the incidents. I am a proud Jew. I am a proud supporter of Israel, and I have been subject and targeted with anti-Semitic incidents and epithets myself in my life. And it is unacceptable in every way. And we need to address it and root out the causes of the anti-Semitic incidents and the vitriolic and vehement rhetoric that is targeted at members of the Jewish community for both their political positions and for their identity. I talked earlier about needing to do better. This is an area where I feel very personally affronted by what is happening in our town, and I know many others who do as well. So in order to address that and that legacy of hate, we need to do wide community education and begin also in the schools to address through curricular interventions teaching about the history of antisemitism and its impact on members of the Jewish community.
Thank you. Shontel?
I am very aware of racist and anti-Semitic tones, actions, concerns, not only because I have observed them in our community, but because I've sought out people to understand multiple perspectives, and folks have sought me out, knowing my background in cross-cultural communications and writing curriculum, especially for adults, to look at equity, diversity, and inclusion. One of the reasons that I've talked about in this campaign throughout my work as a volunteer and my work as a professional, but particularly in this campaign, intentional inclusion, because skills building, conversations that take down the tone of the rhetoric are very important, and opportunities to craft who we want to be now. We must continue to talk to one another, and we must move forward opportunities for everyone to learn without being divisive.
Thank you. And Eileen?
Yeah, so we, we've had a number of events, I mean, of incidences in our community. Some of them racist, some of them anti-Semitic. We saw in Centerfell, you know, where there was an attack on a statue at a Catholic church. We have addressed these issues in our town. We've called them out. We've stood for anti, you know, we are an, we are a no hate community. I've had a, personally had a bomb threat at my home. So I personally understand what it's like to deal with these issues. We have a racial equity committee, and we do, we do take their lead in how to deal with some of these issues. We hope to be open and be open to all opinions. We've had our library threatened over speakers. So, you know, we do have to deal with this. This is the modern world where people try to cancel each other occasionally. And I think the best thing we can do is shine light and let everyone have a voice and respect the First Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ford?
I agree that we need to have a, a policy and an attitude and an approach where everybody has a voice. We had a hate speech incident at Memorial Park about four years ago. I was among the people that protested against that. I spoke against the racist tagging that took place at Memorial Park, and there's really no reason for it. But it's also really hard as people become more, are more polarized and more estranged in the positions they hold. And I think that the remedy to that is not suppression of any point of view, but to enhance the opportunity to communicate. I mean, the town in my building in two thousand and three came and removed a political sign I had on the side of the building. I sued the town and won. So there's a, a basis in San Anselmo where we need to do more work, and we've done some good work so far.
Thank you. And Kurt, you're next.
So this is really hard. Last year at Wade Thomas, there was a swastika on the wall at Wade Thomas that prompted a conversation amongst parents and teachers in the community. I was hard pressed to explain to a second grader, you know, the, the cultural sort of baggage which got us to where we are today that was manifest in that swastika on the wall. So I don't know what the right answer is. My gut is, it's just more education. Although it's like, the question is, at what point do you start really talking to kids? I would guess like at an educational level, you get into high school and you really start getting into it. But this is a systemic problem across everywhere, and I don't know what the right answer is.
Okay, thank you. And Guy, please unmute.
Okay, well, as a New Englander who's fifty percent Jewish and was bar mitzvahed, I have to say that I'm, I'm a little bit ignorant, except for the, the blasts of anger that's floating around because of political stuff and people dying in the Middle East. But I'm, I'm ignorant of, of, of whatever this hatred, the anti-hatred movement. I'm just a guy from the sixties. I mean, that was all about, only love could conquer hate. And, you know, I think, I think we have to give everybody a lot of room on this planet to have political differences and not necessarily take them to be hate. You know, it's always, always, the enemy is always the one who's hating, and we're always the one who's just, just really nice. You know, it's always, the enemy is always the one who's hating, and we're always the one who's just really nice. You know, and children act out. Swastikas, I think it's just ignorance. And only light can bring everybody out of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for question five, we're going to begin with Chantel. And the question is, last year, San Anselmo residents voted to exit the Zone 9 flood control. Since it passed, nothing has been done to protect the downtown from the quote "25 years" unquote floods. What are your ideas for mitigating the risk of other damaging event, considering that the last one was in 2005 and the clock is really ticking now?
Thank you. We need a reset. Right now, in exiting the conversation, and we do not have a voice at the table, but our funds are still at the table. We need to continue to look at what are the opportunities to build new relationships with the jurisdictions around us, with the county, with our downstream neighbors in Ross, our upstream neighbors in Fairfax. And what I bring to this conversation is not only growing up in Louisiana and having a significant amount of personal experience around flood policy, the impact of flood mitigation. We will not win with water, but we can do better. The relationships and experience that I bring of knitting together jurisdictions on big issues will be very helpful to the council as we begin to repair these relationships and take action, while also auditing some of what we could have done better in the past to make sure that the next amount of funds that we spend, we spend collectively and we spend with a very strong eye to monitoring how those funds are spent.
Thank you. Eileen?
Yeah, so I live in the flood zone. I'm 100 yards from ground zero, and I pay flood insurance annually. Flood Zone 9 was a failure for San Anselmo, and our residents told us that they wanted to get out because $15 million was wasted. So for those who think we shouldn't have got out, you're not listening to our residents. That's what they wanted. There was no collaboration with the towns. They proposed detention basins in Fairfax and San Anselmo that were voted down by the residents. There are things we can do related to flooding, however. We require elevation if you live in the flood zone. We've installed floodgates at downtown businesses. We have bio swales. We can keep our creek clean. And we can reinvent the flood zone on the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. And I've already started talking to other council members in other towns about how we do that to get ahead of when they exit Flood Zone 9 in 2027, which everyone thinks is inevitable. So yes, I believe that we still need to have regional flood mitigation, but Flood Zone 9 and that model was a failure.
Thank you, Eileen. Ford, you're next.
Thank you. There isn't going to be any amount of funds incoming this time around. The flood fee was enacted by the voters in consequence of really some manipulation by the county for 20 years in 2007. It was earmarked $60 million. That money is expiring in three years. At this point, we've wasted $52 million and have very little to show for it. The planning has been abominable at the outset. What the operating assumption was that detention basins were going to be the cure to everything, but there was never any analysis about whether or not the people would want those detention basins. And they didn't. People had an initiative and voted it down in San Anselmo. I was the only council member that stood up against the other council members with respect to that. So while it's complicated and it's controlled by FEMA, there's very little that we can do this way around. We need to have a new model.
Thank you. And Kurt?
This is one of those issues which I think is an example of what I view as extremism that didn't necessarily serve the citizens of San Anselmo. I think there's a difference between a flood district having been ineffective from whether or not the idea of having a joint powers authority to work on this issue was a good idea. I think it was a good idea that was poorly executed. As has been mentioned, at this point, the funds are going in and we don't even have a seat at the table. I think, I agree with Chantel, a reset on this issue would be in order. I think with some new people at the table, both in the council and at the county, which is happening anyway because of the election, there's an opportunity to chart a path forward where we are actually working collaboratively with our neighbors to solve the problem. This is true across climate issues that are multi-jurisdictional. There's a Marin County grand jury report about this former new JPA to work on sea level rise. Local governments by themselves typically don't have the bandwidth or capacity to apply for and get grant funding to address these problems. We need it.
Thank you. And Guy, please unmute, and you are next. Please unmute. Guy, you're still muted. Guy, you are still muted and we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
All right. Well, I've no longer can see everybody, but at least I'm unmuted. So regarding the flood issues, the whole plan was so flawed from the get-go. The only, the thought was that they were going to get one-third of the retention of the floodwaters, that is, over the banks, would be taken care of by detention basins. The other two-thirds simply by some kind of magic of removing the platform, which was never going to happen. I am totally in favor of San Anselmo retrieving the platform, pulling itself together. There's not much we can do in terms of the incoming flood. Well, there are actually some plans, but we've got to deal with it as a town. We really need to have the full responsibility and the power of a town. I'm very careful of all this regionalization talk. I think it leads to flawed decisions and keeps people out of being connected. Thank you.
Thank you. And you off?
Thanks, Becky. Before I answer this question, I just want to return to three responses to the last question, which have frankly left me gobsmacked. The suggestion that we respect the First Amendment, that we not suppress any points of view or that a swastika is questionably a hate symbol are frankly incomprehensible to me. Those are all hate speech and not protected speech in any way, so I will leave it at that. Now, as for flood control Zone 9, exiting through Measure F was a gross mistake. We are now paying a tax into a body with which we have no voice at the table. We have no agency. We have no ability to collaborate with the partners, and floods will still happen. So we need to address that. And we need to address that through flood mitigation techniques like permeable pavement and asphalt, green roofs and rain gardens, improved drainage systems, creek restoration, floodable basins, which were put down by Ford in a mistake because multi-use parks are an incredibly important tool for flood mitigation. And we need low-impact development that encourages building, that reduces stormwater drain off through sustainable building procedures.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to question six. And question six, we're going to begin with Eileen. Please describe the changes that you would support to improve parking and traffic flow on San Anselmo Avenue to sustain and promote and to sustain and promote business activity in the town.
So the main change that I support is to install parking meters. What we find is happening is that people park and stay for a lengthy period of time, and there's not turnover that would help promote our merchants. And so, you know, the town, it doesn't have to be expensive, but we should have parking meters on San Anselmo Avenue that allow for turnover and allow for a small amount of income to the town. So that's, I think, one of the main things that I would do. I know there's been some proposals to float, I mean, to have been floated to make San Anselmo Avenue one-way. I absolutely do not support that. I think that would just absolutely and completely ruin our downtown neighborhoods because it would push cars into those neighborhoods that would be constantly circulating. So that's one thing. The other thing I do is give permits to the people who live in the downtown streets so they don't have to move their cars every two or four hours, so that they can park there all day long if they don't have parking, but they live in those downtown streets. I think those are the two things that would improve downtown the most.
Thank you. And Ford?
If we're jamming up construction and housing all over San Anselmo, an inevitable consequence of that is going to be even more traffic than the traffic we have now. It's just going to be completely out of control. It will force some people out of their cars and on the bikes, which I think is a good thing. But there also, we have a lot of elderly people in San Anselmo. They're not riding bikes and they need to get around by cars. In terms of parking, I think that, I agree with Eileen that meters would be appropriate, but I'd go beyond that. And for example, at the Magnolia Lot, what could be installed pursuant to a public-private partnership would be stacking parking, like there is in New York City. That would take care of a lot of the parking issues that we have because the problem is too many people, not enough space. And so long as we keep going on the same trajectory, we're going to increase the number of people here and the number of cars, and it's going to become unbearable for everybody.
Thank you. And Kurt?
So one obvious solution is to continue what the Climate Action Commission started talking about a long time ago, and that's taking steps towards increasing the likelihood that people are sort of pursuing alternatives to taking cars whenever possible. We have a fairly bike-friendly town in some respects, but additional improvements could be made. Unfortunately, people are still going to come in with their cars and want to park. I think if things continue to get worse, I mean, my wife tells me sometimes on Center and Sir Francis Drake are completely a parking lot, and it gets harder and harder. That's ultimately going to lead more people to just simply get on bikes, if that's a possible option for them, because that's going to be the fastest way to get there. And as part of our general plan update, which we're just starting now, I think we could systematically plan for how do we encourage more non-vehicle traffic from getting around town.
Thank you. And Guy, please unmute, and you are next.
Okay. I think Eileen's idea about the parking meters may be a good idea for San Anselmo. In general, I think we should all reflect on what is the traffic surrounding downtown San Anselmo. And we have failed intersections frequently during the course of the day. If not failed, I mean, they're just, you're backed up eight car lengths and hoping that you're going to get through the next light change. Anybody who advocates more density of housing right now, I think is, you're just doing, it's a travesty to the quality of life for San Anselmo. How do we, one thing I might suggest would be a local shuttle, a $5 shuttle. Somebody could have a job for senior citizens, call somebody up, take you right downtown, drop you off. That might be good. For other senior citizens, get out there on your bikes and you got to challenge yourself to stay healthy. People keep living in this planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and you off?
I have two daughters, nine and 11, and we can't safely ride our bikes or walk to downtown San Anselmo because of the lack of biking and walking infrastructure that makes a safe route from our house to downtown, which means we inevitably drive, just like so many other people in San Anselmo likely drive to downtown. So I agree with Kurt entirely that one of the best approaches here will be to encourage more biking and walking to the extent that is possible to reduce parking requirements on the avenue to begin with. After that, I do think that it's worth considering some more creative approaches that would also not require meters on the avenue, but that would serve our community in interesting and novel ways. So for example, Petaluma has built parking garages by the downtown area that service that community. And people go to those parking garages, park, and then they are able to access all the services of downtown Petaluma. A parking garage like that at Sir Francis Drake and Greenfield with a pedestrian walkway over Sir Francis Drake to access downtown easily would be an interesting and novel approach to addressing the issue that we're talking about.
Thank you. And finally, Chantel?
This is an area that I would say both looking at parking as well as significantly making it easier for people of all ages and all biking skills to bike and walk is very important. The town has some very strong plans in place, and we need to choose one about traffic calming some of the traffic to encourage more public transportation. The loss of some of those routes to the ferry would support commuters in the downtown, or the returning of some of those routes to the ferries on buses would support commuters. In the downtown area, potentially having a shuttle that runs up and down San Anselmo Avenue. I would like to see it be free, but we can look at the cost of something like that and maybe touch Red Hill would allow people not to try to park as quickly and closely along those very few streets in the downtown. And I also think we have opportunities for parking garages just off the downtown that would add a level or two to the existing parking garages or parking lots that are open for us. So both and strategy, and we have some good things in the works.
Okay. For question seven, we're going to begin with Ford. And the question is, what are your emergency preparedness goals for the next four years? And how would you promote education and planning around disaster preparedness?
Hold on just a second. I'll just go. The primary one has to do with safe evacuation routes in a fire. A huge amount of San Anselmo involves very small, very narrow, very winding streets up in the hills. And the only way that people are going to be able to address any sort of fire tornado that God forbid wails through here is going to be if we practice escaping. Because what will happen if we don't is that we'll panic. And when there's panic, what goes right along with panic is disaster and death. So the main thing that I would support is the continuing work of the Fire Department and the MWPA in developing evacuation routes and then organizing neighborhoods and practicing evacuating so that we know what to do if and when, and hopefully never that fateful time comes.
Thank you. Kurt, you're up next.
So I agree with Ford around fire preparedness. We have these things called firewise committees, which are neighborhood groupings of folks that come together to sort of plan for and consider what they're going to do and review the recommendations that they've gotten from the local JPA related to that. I think that could be stepped up dramatically, that there's a fairly small number of those that exist currently in the town. And so with some additional work from the town through the newsletter and others, I think we could hopefully precipitate that. Second issue, and this goes directly to my day job, it's a climate center, is related to power resilience. So it's great that we have the Town Hall Resilience Hub starting construction. We could easily imagine a world where every single critical facility in town is comparable and it has a basically solar canopy and available battery storage so that all critical facilities in town have a plan for keeping lights on when the power goes out, and it will go out.
Okay, thank you. And Guy, you are next.
Thank you. I'm going to use the term carrying capacity. Eileen mentioned it before. When talking about emergencies, you look at our police, 10 years ago, or maybe it was 20 years ago, we stopped having a San Anselmo Police Department. We've put ourselves in a precarious position with that, with the Twin Cities Central Marin Police. I would like to see a five-year plan of bringing it back, even though I know it would be a very difficult proposition, but we're spending $5 million a year for the police down in Central Marin. In the Fire Department, we have four fire stations who are together. One of them will be gone next year. That'll make three. We're not in a good position there. What no one's mentioning is actually, I think the big deal is going to be earthquake. How do we prepare for ourselves? To me, we have to empower our neighborhoods and thinking about, again, greater density, et cetera. It's so misguided. We must stay local. We have a community. We've got to work with it.
Okay, thank you. Next is you off?
I think this might be one of the only things that Ford and I agree on, which is that we need safe evacuation routes and evacuation planning in place for the case of an emergency. That is critical. I know a lot of people who, when I ask them, what's your plan for when you get an evacuation order, have no idea whether they should walk, bike, stay in their cars, evacuate then, evacuate later. And just so you know, the timer is not working. I'm seeing a stop.
No, I see that.
Okay, thank you. But critically also, we need But critically also, we need to ensure first responders are supported. In the case of an emergency, our safety, our well-being will be in the hands of our first responders. So that means we need to make sure our firefighters have up-to-date and sophisticated equipment. We need to make sure that they have the necessary staffing levels on each fire engine to assure that they can evacuate as safely, and we need to ensure that they can live nearby, so they're not two hours away when an evacuation order happens. Lastly, I will say that the hills are an issue, and so we probably need to consider painting parking boxes or redlining and curbside more parking spaces so that there is passable space for those fire engines, that they can navigate those windy roads in the case of an emergency.
Okay, thank you. Chantel, you're up next.
In our community, and for me personally, emergency preparedness is a top priority. I live on one of those windy roads up in the hills. I would regularly advocate for neighborhood evacuation drills. There's even software on that and practicing much more often, as has been talked about. Increasing fire prevention through defensible space, building on the idea of what's happening in firewise. In my neighborhood, there's an active firewise, and what I have learned is that we have several gaps in communities and in neighborhoods of volunteers leading their firewise efforts. I'd like to see the council inspire that work, continue to expand it. We are now moving towards the minimal staffing levels on our fire engines. I'd like to see us look at those recommended levels. It is in our interest to support those recommended staffing levels and making sure that as a town, we're connecting the leaders of these emergency efforts. I also see the possibility of very strong collaboration happening as we consolidate to three fire engines across the multiple jurisdictions that we share fire service with.
Thank you. And finally, Eileen?
So, since I've been on the council, we now have three firefighters on every engine, and that was a long time coming, but we're now at what is the standard. We're looking at consolidating with Central Marin Fire, and that may happen to give us just a broader group that we can pull from. Also, the MWPA will be coming up for re-up, and, and even Tiburon and Belvidere want to get in now, and I, I suggest that we continue with MWPA. I agree with dedicated spots in the hills for parking. I think we should continue with the defensible space inspections that MWPA is doing, and I support the shaded fuel breaks that they've been engaged in. The other important thing we've already done is we are building a resiliency hub on the top of Town Hall, so that when there are planned power shut-offs, residents can come to Town Hall if they need it for air conditioning, if they need it to, to charge their phones. So we are already planning for emergencies. And as I've, as I've mentioned earlier, in terms of flooding, I'm already talking to council members in surrounding jurisdictions about how we plan for 2027 when they get out of flood zone nine.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is, concludes the question portion of the forum. We have so many more questions we'd like to ask and just not enough time. But before the candidates make their closing statements, I want to share some key election information. So slide one, please. So here's some important dates. On Monday, October 7th, the Marin County Elections Department began mailing ballots to all registered voters. Ballots can be returned by US mail, at an official secure ballot drop box, or at any vote center. Official ballot drop boxes are now available. For in-person voting, vote centers replace assigned polling places. Voters may vote in person at any vote center in Marin. A complete list of locations is included in your voter information guide. All vote centers will be open at least four days before Election Day. In case anybody doesn't remember, November 5th is Election Day. Mailed ballots must be postmarked by this date. Vote centers are open until 8:00 PM. Ballots returned using a ballot drop box must be deposited by 8:00 PM. October 21st is the last day to register online to vote. After this day, you can still register, but only in person. Slide two, please. Here are the important dates in Spanish. And just a couple reminders, be sure to sign your ballot if you return it by mail or in a drop box. And if you have questions, please reach out to Marin County's Elections Department in person, online, or by phone. Slide three, please. There are many online resources for election information, including the League's website at MarinLWV.org. Another helpful League of Women Voters resource is Vote 411, a free online tool that provides information about what's on your ballot. Candidates are invited to enter their information. Voters can get a personalized list of candidates, including their biographies and top priorities, and information about local ballot measures and more, in English and in Spanish. Vote 411 replaces Voter's Edge, our previous online voter guide. I encourage you to please visit Vote411.org, and I want to thank all of these candidates for posting their information on Vote411.org. If you forget what they said today, you can go online and look at Vote411 and compare all of their statements, including their experience and their priorities. Thank you. And now, the candidates will make closing statements of one minute each. We'll go in reverse order of the opening statements, starting with Chantel.
I thank you for this evening. I would like one of your three votes for the San Anselmo Town Council. I am a leader who shares information, listens, and takes action. I have led in San Anselmo at the state and at the county level. I'll champion our economic vibrancy, emergency preparedness, infrastructure upgrades, inclusive community connectedness, and balanced housing policies to meet the needs of San Anselmo residents and businesses. I have been endorsed by people that I have worked with and had a moment to talk to and had long amounts of time to talk to because of my track record of clarity, effectiveness, calm in the face of difficult conversations and the results that I've been able to produce in our community over the last 25 years. I hope to garner your vote. Thank you very much for having me. Thank you to the League, and thank you to the Chamber, and thank you to the other candidates as we move forward towards the election.
Thank you. Next is Eileen. And... You got it.
No.
Almost established.
We're going in reverse.
Not yet. You're still mute.
I, I thought we were going in reverse order.
I thought we were going in reverse order.
And that would be, Chantel, you have Guy, Kurt, Ford, and Eileen.
I'm sorry. Yeah, well...
Am I right?
I'm happy, I'm happy to go. That's fine.
Yeah, no, you're, you're right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I ma, I made a mistake. So we started with Chantel, and now we're going with you all. Sorry about that.
So, should I start?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for this evening. As I mentioned before, I have two daughters, they're nine and 11, and I'm doing this for them. I want to build a San Anselmo that works for them, not only today, but that will also be here thriving, vibrant, affordable, livable, safe when they want to return in 15, 20 years, and that requires work. You know, I've been walking around San Anselmo knocking on doors these last few weeks, and I've personally knocked on about 1,900 doors now. And what I hear from everyone that I've talked to is the desire for practical, feasible solutions to challenges that we're facing. People want to move forward. Future-forward leadership that is ethical, principled, values-driven, innovative, pragmatic, and really builds consensus forward for navigating the complex challenges that we see every day. I have a goal to ensure that San Anselmo remains a place where people of all ages, backgrounds, and income levels can live, work, and thrive. I'd be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. And now, Guy?
I, I want San Anselmo to be a town that's full of leadership. I want San Anselmo, I want this town to be a leader on the planet. And for me, when I see all this plans to adapt or to change for, to the environmental crisis, but not to actually, as an individual or as a town, to look at our own footprint, I, I, I'm just, I think we haven't tapped the power of humans, of this town, to say, we can do this. We don't need more infrastructure or concrete, or, you know, take care of the park. It's, it's a, it's a new, a new vision, a new ethic that we need, and it's not anything real brand-new, it's, it's very traditional. It's being responsible. A town that's responsible for its footprint of how it impacts the planet, and people are. I think it's a great town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kurt, you're next.
Thank you, and thanks to our hosts. We live in one of the richest communities, in one of the richest states, in one of the richest nations of the world. And yet, we're still not doing what we need to do to reduce our own emissions or protect ourselves from the extreme events that are headed our way. I think we have a responsibility, and most importantly, to current and future generations, to do a better job than we are now. If you think this is important, and you think it's time to move past some of the polarization we've seen on Town Council, I would appreciate your vote. I'm supported by people on both the right and the left, not because they agree with me and everything, they don't, but because they agree with my underlying values, long experience, and commitment to working collaboratively for a better future in San Anselmo. Thank you.
Thank you. Ford, you're next.
Thank you for tonight's program. I want to go where the committee involved citizens of San Anselmo want to go. I want to move per our citizens' desires, not per an elected official's agenda. There's a difference between wanting to have experience and a record that can be examined. Check out some of my accomplishments as a council member. Navigating the early days of the COVID pandemic as mayor in our economic and social recovery. Implementing San Anselmo's Live on the Avenue event series and parklets. Fighting for the liberation of Creek Park Plaza. Addressing the firestorm threat by requiring three firefighters on each Ross Valley fire engine. It's now the norm. Ensuring Sky Ranch, Bald Hill, and other open space purchases. I'm endorsed by Jonathan Braun and Stanley Radke of the Open Space Committee co-chairs. Enacting ordinances prohibiting the single-use plastics and two-cycle engines and repairing our infrastructure, particularly our library and roads. I would like your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ford. And now, finally, Eileen.
Thank you. The IJ calls me a strong, practical voice on the council, and that's because I understand that residents want town government to focus on the basics first. That means well-paved roads, and we have the highest paved index in Marin. That means safe streets. We've installed bike lanes, new curbs, crosswalk, crosswalk beacons, and speed humps. That means emergency services, and we now have three firefighters on every engine. And it means a smooth-running town, which we have. But they also want us to make our town special, and that's why I've focused on things like our parks, recreational opportunities, and community events like Live on the Avenue. San Anselmo is a great town, and I understand that it's the basics that come first, but then it's that icing on the cake that makes everyone else want to live here. I'm going to continue to focus on the basics, and as your mayor, it's been an honor to serve you, and I'd appreciate your vote.
Thank you all so much for your closing statements. Before we end the evening, our host partner, Benedetto Chico, representing the San Anselmo Chamber of Commerce, has a brief closing remark. I think. Benedetto, are you there? Well, I'm not, hearing, not, not hearing from him. I do have his closing remarks, and so I will read that to you. He said, "Many thanks again to all who attended. Due to the restrictions, we could not, of course, ask all the questions that many of you had for tonight. I suggest to reach out directly to the candidates if you still have important questions to clarify before voting. Good night, everybody, from Benedetto." So thank you to the candidates for participating, to the League Forum team, and to the San, San Anselmo Chamber of Commerce. And special thanks to our partners at Community Media Center of Marin and to our Spanish-language interpreters. The video of tonight's forum will be posted on the League's website in the next few days. Thank you again for joining us this evening, and most important, thank you for voting. Good night, everybody.